I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. We welcome everyone here for the normal, regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Again, we welcome those of you that are here in person, and we also would like to welcome those that might be live streaming it or listening as well. So with that being said, the first item on the agenda, any public input on the board If not, I'll entertain a motion by the commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Aaron, second by Schmidt, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carried. Next, any public input for the approved consent agenda? If not, again-
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
The motion by Schmidt, seconded by Aaron's, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Moving on then to our regular business. The first item, Paul, would you like to introduce our person here that's going to speak to us a little bit today about strategic planning?
Yeah, so we have John Baronic speaking to us from Intersections Consulting. We have discussed strategic planning in the past, and Commissioner Andy had mentioned having someone come talk. So John is from the Sioux Falls area and has worked with government. He'll tell you about himself and kind of explain strategic planning in general, and you guys can ask questions about it, expected results, process, anything, any questions you might have about strategic planning in general, you can ask John, and he'll, and he can come up right now.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm John Baronic. I live in Sioux Falls, but I'm a country bumpkin from Miller, South Dakota, so if you want to know a little bit about me, you probably can find out a lot about me from the Miller folk that are there. I also was thinking this morning, I was involved with the Dakota Resources project with the Canton community engagement here for a number of years, so I've been involved in this community as well. Paul talked to me about doing strategic planning. It's something I do in my business. I do strategy work. I do team building with organization. I do one-on-one executive coaching with people. I'm under contract with the city of Sioux Falls. I've done strategic planning with planning and zoning. I've worked with the HR team. I've worked with a number of individuals from different departments. I've also done strategic planning with state government. I've done strategic planning for the Department of Revenue, the Department of Education, the Department of Social Services, the Department of Historic Preservation. So it's kind of a wide range of government entities. Happy to answer any questions around any of those that you would like. Strategic planning to me is one of those things that can be misunderstood about what it is that people want to do. To me, the end result is what is the implementation. It's not just what's the plan that you get put together, but how do you actually implement the plan and prove that you've made some progress around all of it. I have a process that I utilize that I've been trained in called Technology of Participation. It's had over 50 years of research around all of it. Key to the strategy work for me is that we're not telling people what to do, but we're listening to people about what it is that they want, and then we get it rooted in strategy. Probably one of the skill sets that I have is I'm pretty good at helping people create metrics for it so that you can prove that you're actually making a difference. It's not just a plan that you would put on the shelf. If you asked me ideally what I'd like to do with strategy work for you, it would be how could we have some community engagement, some listening sessions, let people have some input first, then have a smaller strategic planning team that walks through the process with me. Depending on how we do it, it could be a couple of two full days, or it could be broken up into four days to be able to do it. And then what I like to do is I'd like to let the public that was part of the listening session come back and take a look before it's finalized and have a little report out on what it is that we're thinking about strategy, get some input. What I've found is when you do that and they see some of the things that they talked about in the listening session actually show up in the strategic plan, more people are willing to be engaged in it. And then if you decide to have some implementation teams that actually have community members, they'll step up to be involved in it. I thought I'd show you a few of the things, a few of the pages I'm happy to share with you. Happy to share with you. Place document below here. Here we go. That's not, I see how we do this. I would just, I'm just going to walk through, this would be a participant toolkit. Everybody that works with me gets a full toolkit of the whole process, so it's open. Everybody understands what it is. And so there's a four-part process for strategic planning. The first piece of it is to, I would say it's to do a little bit of listening, and then I do what I call an environmental scan. I'm going to slip to this. This would be one example of that environmental scan. What are some of those boundary issues, trends, things that we need to be aware of in our community? We can look at that from our community, the state level and the national level for some of those trends. We're going to talk about what are those things that are emerging that we should be aware of or we'd like to be ahead of. We're going to talk about some of those things that are established that we do really well that we want to hold on to. And then maybe what are some of those things that are disappearing or they've worked with us well for one point, but we're going to start to let those things go to let some emergence happen. The process is four steps. The first step would be the visioning of what do we want to see in place in the next three to five years as a result of our collective actions. The second is talking about what are some of those things that might block us or get in our way of achieving that vision. And if we name those things, a lot of times we can get around those blocks or barriers, find ways to do that. The next step is what we call in my language strategic directions. You might have heard them as goals with other plans, but the strategic directions, it's almost like those things that would be in a swim lane that are working towards some sort of goal or implementation. The final piece is that implementation piece. This is where I like to get metrics, what will be our specific measurable accomplishments for the first year. So once we've named those things for the first year, then what we would do is we would take a look at what's the current reality around this strategic direction? What are our strengths? What are our weaknesses and where are there new opportunities for us? And then we flip over to that right side, two to three years from now, how would we prove that we've been successful? What are those success indicators that we're looking for for that? Then after we identify those, we would go back to that middle column. So what do we want to do in the first year to get us to that three-to-five-year goal? For each of those bullets that show up in that first-year accomplishment, we would fill out one of these. This is an implementation step. So we'd talk a little bit about what is that strategic direction? Why do we want to do it? And jump down to what's the victory for it? I've found that when people struggle through that, it seems like it's easy, but when they struggle through those, they get a better job of being able to do implementation steps, figure out what it is, how we want to do it, what, who might be the coordinator, or I sometimes call it the nudger that keep things moving forward? What's the team members for this piece? Who might be collaborating partners within the community that might help us do that? And then projecting what might be the budget for the work that we have. So the final goal would be is that you would have a full-blown calendar that everybody could see for each of those strategic directions, and then it would be calendared out. Who's doing what by when? When do we want to have all that happen? If you're like any other group that I work with, the very first quarter, you think you can do too much in the first quarter, and so that we talk about that, see if there are some things that we can align or move differently. I really like to have as part of the contract, then I come back at the end of the first quarter, and the end of the first quarter, and excuse my language, I'm going to say this, I call it the oh shit factor, oh shit, John's coming back, we either better hurry up and get something done, or we better be able to explain why we no longer think that's a priority. What I've found at the end of the first quarter is people really zero in then, and they're very clear on what we need to do, and often in that implementation phase, we see things really take off from there. Also as part of the process, it's quite common for me to talk a little bit about some different theories, research theories. This is called the iceberg theory. We talk about what are some of those things that are happening in the community? What's the pattern and trends around them? Can we get underneath those underlying structures around it? And then what is the mental shift mindset that needs to occur in order to go back up that other side? How can we transform our thinking? How can we design differently? How can we begin to anticipate the problems or issues and find a why solution rather than just reacting quickly over and over again and not making progress in anything? So that's like so fast to explain that. I think it would be, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about either my experience or the process that would be helpful to it. I think I'll stop there. Does that sound all right, Paul? Is that enough of it for, Paul got the longer version of it, but I'll stop there. Questions and wonders you have for me?
Have you done this often with county governments or any form of governments?
Yes, I've done it with state government. So I've done the Department of Revenue, the Department of Education, Department of Social Services. We did almost a two-year process with them. Historic Preservation. I've done a number of city departments with the city of Sioux Falls. I've done, I just have finished Black Hill State University, the whole university plan for them, and now I'm going back and working with some of the individual departments for that. So yeah, wide range of government.
So metrics, are they set up according to each of the goals that we have?
Correct, correct. So we would look for, what's really common for me is people will do a broad goal of something they would like to achieve, and they often don't have actual metrics to it. I'm, as the facilitator, I'm not trying to influence anything, but I'll say, tell me how you're going to prove that. What's the things you need to do to prove that? What could be success indicators around this? A lot of times what I see happen is we don't have any baseline data for it, so we're not sure how to do metrics. Then I talk about, then what is the baseline data that we're going to put in there so that we can prove that we're making a difference and making progress?
So is this something that, you know, you have the public observe livestream, or can you go in a retreat setting, or how is it done and most effective?
Yeah, I think I would recommend that you have a number of listening sessions, and we can do it where I facilitate those listening sessions, or we could have, I could have a little bit of a process where, say, the good old boys at the coffee shop, or the red hat society gals, or whatever, I could teach somebody how to have shorter conversations where they're gathering some data for that. I would recommend that you have a smaller strategic planning team. You can decide how that, what that group would be. They would do a deeper dive with me facilitating that process, and then I would recommend we'd have some sort of listening session again to go, here's what it is before we finalize, to get some feedback. Go back into that strategic planning team and say, what did we hear from the people that were listening to us? What changes might we make? What additions, what deletions might we do from that? And then finalize it. And then I strongly recommend what I call a rollout of it. So how do we have a community, again, a community engagement around pieces of the strategic plan and have members of the strategic planning team talk to it for the public around it? And then, and then, sorry, one more. Then it would be, and it's up to you guys to decide what an implementation team would look like, but where I see it be successful, it's not just you guys that are implementing, it's members of the community too. So what would, small-sized teams, what's the scope of what they would do? That's the kind of thing, then I can support those implementation teams and kind of keep them on track or so that we've got a similar process. My goal in this type of work is how do we have a consistent plan that everybody can have a unified message about what it is that we're doing, why it is that we're doing, and what will be the metrics to prove that we've made a difference?
Okay, thank you. Any questions by this commission?
John, I am, Lincoln County is so ready for strategic planning. It's unbelievable. We've never done one.
Yeah.
And not to our credit. And when you are looking at this county as opposed to any across the state with our growth and our challenges and issues that probably are well-known, you know, not only here but across the state, because whenever you go someplace and you talk to commissioners, they always bring up all of these things you have. When you talk about a timeline, what kind of timeline are you talking about?
For doing the process or for the actual plan?
Well, I like, you know, for the, we're going to have to have it public input.
Yeah.
Because strategic planning without public input-
Yep.
-is just internal, and you know, it's like blinders on. So if you started, if we set a date for January 1, just pick one out. What's the process? Do you mean, how many of these public meetings do you have? Because I know Sioux Falls, I've gone to there several times. So how many of them would you say? And just kind of run through a generic one if you would.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not going to pretend to be evasive, but here's the other part that I didn't tell you that I'd like to do. I like to have what I call a design team, five to seven people, maybe a member or two of you, a member of the public, whatever. That design team, we'd get together and talk about how many listening sessions do you think we need to have to get good information, that type of thing, so that group would work with me. So I'm going to, I'm going to say that. That group would help decide to answer the questions that you've said, Commissioner Schmidt. But I'll tell you, ballpark-ish, I would say four to six listening sessions are usually enough that people have, and for the community of this size. And I know Canton, at least Canton, the city of Canton, a lot of people participate in the listening sessions that we had before. We had, I think, several hundred people show up for that. So we've got a process that some people in this community, in this town would be familiar with fairly quickly, so that would be easy to do. But I would say four to six listening sessions. And then sometimes there are some key stakeholders. I call it empathy interviews. Who are some key people that can't show up for the listening session, but we really think their voices are important? We might do a handful of one-on-one interviews with people who maybe couldn't come to the listening session that we think were key. And I think that's probably enough data that we have for that. And then I think you would go into the strategic planning process. If you ask me what I'd like ideally, I'd like to have two and a half days back-to-back. Most people, that's not realistic because they got jobs. We can break that up into four sessions, or we can do a retreat setting where it's over the weekend, so that I'm happy to work with whatever it is for people to be able to do. Then I think we take a break, come back for a review, have again the listening session that roll out that we're still, we're not finalized yet, but here's what we're thinking about, to have some feedback. I think that's one meeting. People show up for that, or not show up for that. We finalize the plan, and then we move into what would be the implementation teams.
John, my concern is, I have a concern on this. We basically have two counties. You have county, you have urban in the north, you have rural in the south.
Yeah.
I have no doubt that if you have listening sessions, that the rural population will certainly show up.
Mm-hmm.
Because they have a definite interest in what the future is and how are we going to maintain an ag base and a rural sentiment. So, but we got this group of people in the north that are not necessarily engaged, and yet they are proportionately where the population is, and that's where the taxes come from. I mean, I don't, I know people don't want to hear that, but 80% of the taxes come up from that area up there. So how would you engage that public in the north to get them to have a sense that they're part of the county as well and its future?
I'm going to go back to that conversation with that design team that we're talking about. We would talk about who are some of the champions in the north, and what I mean by that, who are the people that if they call and say, hey, you got to come to this listening session, will you show up? There are the people will help bring other people in that are known in that north part. They're not going to come because I say come, they're going to come because there's a local champion there who wants their voices heard, or will say, we got to have a voice in this. So we would talk a little bit with that design team about who, what's the best approach to draw people in, and who might be some of the champions to help bring people in.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr.?
John, thanks for being here.
Yeah.
You know, in government, all too often, the loudest voices in the room seem to be the ones that are heard, but I think what Commissioner Schmidt touched on, and this is what I'm interested in, is hearing from people who are forgotten, who are not the loudest voice, who go to work 12 hours a day and go home, take care of their kids or their house and their family. So how do we tap into who those people are?
Yeah, so I'm so glad you asked the question. First of all, I want to tell you about the process, because I think the process is important. This process that I said is research-based with over 50 years, has two components to it, profound respect and inclusive participation. So I'm very familiar in my work with people who want to stand up the podium and take over. This process has it work in smaller groups to eventually come to the larger group so that no single voice can take over the process, one. Two, I think that it could be in those empathy interviews, it could be in some of those listening sessions, how do we get to some of those voices? I talk about it from the perspective of crock pot versus instant pot thinkers. We've got instant pot thinkers who are like me. You ask me a question, I'm ready to dive into it, and we've got crock pot thinkers who need time to think about it. So as part of that listening process too, there would probably be a place where you get to put additional thoughts, whether that's online or not. So for those crock pot thinkers, when they think of something later, they can still be included in the process and put some thought there. I'm going to go back to that design team that I talked about. I think the design team, that would be another task. How do we assure that some of the quieter voices in the community are, where do they meet? How could we go to them? How could we invite them? Who are the champions of that, those quieter groups that would bring those people in? So if given the opportunity for a variety of types of listening sessions too, a lot of what I do is you do some individual think first. Crock pot thinkers don't realize this, but if I give them some quiet time to write down five of their ideas, talk with a smaller group, then present it to the larger group, I find it very easy for those quieter voices to actually be heard.
Yeah, I appreciate that, John, because unfortunately, in this country, even in this state, there seems to be a widening divergence between where the public is and where their elected leadership is.
Mm-hmm.
And we lead through consent of the governed, right? They, we have an election, that equals consent, and then they expect their elected leader to go out and do what they thought they were going to do. And that doesn't always happen. So the way to bridge that divide possibly is to hear from more voices in the community in order to help understand why there, why is that bridge there?
Yeah.
Or excuse me, why the gulf is there?
And we're not going to solve the gulf issue, but we're, but one of the things that we do in this process, and why I would suggest that you would hire me, is because I'm an objective outside voice. I don't have any skin in the game for it. Also, this process is, no one is more important than anyone else, and so when we're having a listening session or when we're doing strategy work around it, it doesn't matter if you're a commissioner or if you're a citizen, your voices is equal in the conversation in order for us to funnel down to get to what it is that we want to do. It's, it's also pretty common for me, I would say to all of you, you're not the first group that I worked with who said, we've never had a strategic plan before, I don't know why we haven't. And, and I think this process really helps align for people to then put their finger on, here's what we're doing, here's why we're doing it. And it also gives us the ability to say, somebody comes in with another, I don't mean it to be negative, a wild idea or want to do something completely different, we're able to say, we're going to hang on to your idea, but that's for a future strategic plan. This is where we're going to stay focused right now, so that we can have true implementation around all of it. And, and we're going to hang on to your idea, but it's not for now. Here's what we're going on, and this is the why behind it.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
How many of these do you do approximately every year?
I would say full-blown, like your organization, probably six to 10 full-blown processes, but talking about listening and action planning and strategy, it's innumerable. I, this is, and it's going to sound weird, I love this work. I would love to help this commission get a strategic plan that's metric-based, and I'm going to beg you to let me come back a couple of times in the process, because I believe that outside facilitator helping you continue to funnel and, and get more specific and reach the metrics, and also be part, often forgotten part is, how do we celebrate our little bit wins along the way? Sometimes we think we're not making progress, and we come back and we do some celebrating, like we are making incremental steps, and then we're prioritizing for the next one. We do 180-day implementation sheet, and people really get behind it then.
This reminds me of the, for those of us who have been in education, the North Central Accreditation, the NCA, and, and those type of things, and I know we've got some people here today that probably could relate to that. And sometimes where we drop the ball is not finishing it-
Yeah.
...and getting it done, and then not implementing it on a consistent basis, so.
To be honest with you, Commissioner, I don't, I won't say yes to letting you hire me if we aren't going to do the implementation piece.
John, I have one question, John, not to retract, but the county has, you know, we've been talking about individual citizens, which is what they are, but we also have several communities within, whether you're talking Hudson, whether you're talking Fairview, whether you're talking Worthing, whether you're talking Canton, Lenox, T, Harrisburg, Sioux Falls. How do you envision incorporating they, because they all have a plan as well for their own future, and has to somehow fit into where the counties are? Do we look at townships as well, as what their goals and what their aspirations are? How do we tie all of those different entities together beyond just the rank-and-file citizens like myself?
Yeah, two things. One is, in the early part of this process too, we're collecting data. What is the plan that Hudson, does Hudson have some sort of a plan that we should take a look at? What are some of those other communities to do for some baseline data, for some information and awareness? So one, how can we gather the other studies and things that people have done that might lead us to some thoughtful thinking for this strategic plan? The other thing is, is back to those listening sessions, and the third thing I would say is, I'm going to take it back to that design team. What do we think we need to do to get to those people who are our champions that we need to get to? It's easy for us to go do, honestly, you can go do one and a half to two-hour listening session in those communities. You'd be surprised how much good information that we could get, that we would then, the purpose of that would be to bring, to inform at the front end, the strategic planning team, whoever you decide that to be. That's that data and information, that's the, what are we, what are we hearing from the public in those places? So I hope I'm answering it. I know I'm not sounding real direct, but a little bit of that, that's the, the design team's work is to help, help me figure that out. I also, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. I'm going to shut up.
Okay. Well, John, this has been very helpful. Thank you. I know we're taking no board action today, but this gives us some background on you and what you've done and the success that you've had in a, in a plan, and I think we'll probably be addressing this in one of our future meetings coming up.
Yeah, I, last thing I would say is I'm happy to answer any of your questions, additional stuff. If you, I'm wondering if we don't have a crock pot thinker down at this end? If somebody thinks about additional questions that they would like to ask me, I'm happy to do that and talk a little bit more about the process. I'm also happy to come back again if you have some additional wonders around it.
John, do you have a card, business card with you?
He's got all my contact information, is that all right?
All right.
Thank you all very much, John.
Thank you. I know I don't have to do this because there wasn't a motion made, but is there any public input on this? Is any funny here that would like to make a, a public input on it as well? Since we're involving a lot of the public in the background of this.
Good morning, Commission, and thank you for allowing a little bit of public input here. My name is Mark Nordsee, 7900 South Pinewood. I live in northern Lincoln County, southern Sioux Falls, so I'm part of that constituency. I just want to first thank you and applaud you for going ahead with strategic planning. It's a passion of mine as well, and I think it's very important for Lincoln County to do that. I was heartened to hear today that the heart of this thing is an implementation plan. That's always the hardest part. It rarely gets done, so it's important that the effort is put into the implementation. And I was also excited to hear about metrics. That drives accountability, and without that, you just have a pretty binder on the shelf. The other thing I, when they talked about public input, when John talked about how he was going to get public input, I thought that was very, very important, however you choose to do it. Commissioner Schmidt's thought about towns and townships. That's incredible thinking. I mean, we, you know, back in the fan days, we didn't think about that, so thank you for adding that. Now some rhetorical questions. Is this in the budget? Don't know if it is or not, but I thought I would ask- Uh, don't know if it is or not, but I thought I would ask that question. Um, have you established guidelines as you seek to engage, John? Uh, how much uh are you going to allow to be spent? As you go through some of these initiatives, they're gonna cost money, they're not gonna be free, uh, they're not gonna be free in, in employee time. So please be considerate that as you lay out guidelines around your implementation plan. Uh, are you, as a commission, and are your directors, uh, ready for the public quarterly accountability that this could drive? Uh, if you have John come back quarterly, or you, maybe I'll come up on the podium quarterly, and ask, um, are you willing, as a commission, to drive this, and your director is willing to drive this, and engage with the process? That's just so critical. Uh, is the timeline for this to develop um for the twenty-twenty-six budget? Um, is this would be an input to that process, so that um, uh, as the directors start to work through this and get comfortable with it, that they kinda know when they can use this information? And my final uh comment is, is this real? Or is this just another pretty binder we're gonna put on the shelf? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Let's move on then to item number two. Madam Auditor, I believe this is yours.
Thank you, John.
So, um, Lynn Bryn and Zach Jensen were here last week, two weeks ago, to discuss the um property and liability coverage. Uh, so we're, today we're here to decide which way we're gonna go. I think Lynn and Zach both have additional information for you, so I will let them go before you talk about any.
Okay, thank you. Who'd like to go first? Okay.
Good morning, Zach Jensen from Bearsford. Excuse me. As I mentioned last time, EMC um has had some struggles in the industry, and uh, over the last few months, working to uh, to put a proposal together, and where things are at now, they've provided um everything except an auto proposal and an umbrella proposal. Um, our auto losses have, uh, we've had a few auto losses over the last few years. Um, and so that portion has been struggling, uh, property has as well, uh, but they did provide a property renewal, um, but not an umbrella. When we go outside of the package, we'll call it, um, and look for those other lines, the auto and the umbrella, it uh, it, it's not very attractive, it's not very competitive. Um, so with, with that in mind, and knowing, um, you know, the, basically only other option um is with, with the alliance, um, that's going to be, as far as the best route for Lincoln County and its citizens, um, as far as dollars and cents and so forth, um, when we look at our expiring premium, where we're at, you know, October fifth is our renewal as we lead up to that, um, and with the new proposal that we have with Lynn, um, you know, there's a variance of about fifteen percent there, and we're talking, we're a year behind in rates, and we all probably know what rates have done in the last year, um, I would expect that margin to be even greater in the event that they would provide, uh, bring a proposal. So, um, as far as, uh, you know, the, the airport that is still intact, um, I believe that's a November renewal, um, we're still, still involved in that. Um, but going back, you know, four or five months ago, as we kinda sensed this may be the case, um, you know, that's when Sherry and I reached out to Lynn, saying, "Hey, we're gonna, we're gonna need another option." Um, now, one thing that we're going to have to discuss, and Lynn will talk more on that, is our reporting period on the professional liability. Uh, for the directors and officers, uh, the commissioners, uh, as well as the law enforcement liability with professional liability, EMC has been providing coverage back to, basically the inception date of nineteen eighty. It was on an occurrence form, and then about nineteen eighty-eight or so, it changed to a claims form. EMC has provide, has been providing that coverage forever. In the event we do make a change, and will make a change on the claims made side, we have an opportunity to buy what we call an extended reporting period for instances, claims that may arise in the future that we don't know about, which kind of is the insurance concept, but um EMC can provide um a one-year and three-year extended reporting period. A one-year extension has a premium of twenty-nine thousand, twenty-five dollars for one year. Their maximum is three years, which is fifty-six thousand, four thirty-eight. And I believe, uh-
Is that for all three years, then?
Yeah.
Is that a one-time, that's a one-time fee, right?
Yes, 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 one, yeah, one time for three years.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, it's not fifty-six thousand a year for three years?
No, 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 one time.
One time. Yes, that's what I assumed.
Yep, yep, yep. So, that is, the maximum is three years, um, that, that they're able to provide. As far as um moving forward, I think that is, that is going to be our best option, um, is, you know, moving forward with the pool. Um, you know, on behalf of Jensen Agency, I'd, um, and EMC, we'd like to thank you uh, for the, for the years of, uh, for, of business, and uh, it's, I will let Lynn talk a little bit more, um, on her end, as uh, she would have more detail.
Okay, so since we're talking about extended reporting and retro, so let's talk about, so, because you guys have to make some decisions today, so I wanna make sure you understand what extended reporting means versus what retro coverage means. So that extended reporting, that's gonna give you time to, so if there's a claim that occurred sometime back to, he said nineteen eighty-eight, I think is what he said, when your policy changed to a claims made. So that gives you three years for any claims that occurred all the way back, I'm assuming, to nineteen eighty-eight to be reported, to be made. Now, some of those claims are probably not gonna come to fruition, there's probably gonna be some statute of limitations arguments, stuff like that, but it gives you three years to report those. That's different than a retro coverage, which is what we are doing. So our proposal, um, Commissioner Landin had asked for a five-year, a quote for five-year retro coverage. So what retro means is that date is the date that goes back for the occurrence date. So if a claim occurred within the last five years, and is reported any time that you're within the pool, we'll pick it up with the retro coverage. With extended reporting, it can occur any time back to nineteen eighty-eight, but has to be reported to you within three years of leaving. So there's the difference. So you've, I mean, there's a little bit of cross-section where we both could offer some protections there, you just have to decide which you're more comfortable with. Do you want the longer look back with a shorter reporting period, or do you want a shorter look back within a reporting period for as long as you're with the pool? So there's, so that's your first question. Um, I had sent, I think Sherry had forwarded on maybe the pricing for the five-year retro coverage, and then the one and two, I think, were in your original packet.
Lynn, do you wanna state what they are?
So your, if we did a five-year retro for both the law enforcement and the public officials liability, it's a one-time fee, forty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and eighty-two cents, and then, find the sheet.
And that was for, again, which two agencies?
Five-year.
So that's the five-year retro, that would stay with the pool, so that gives you occurrence date five years prior to October fifth, twenty twenty-four, so October five, twenty nineteen, if that's mathed right. I don't math on the fly, I'm a crock pot mather. Um, let's see. And then the one and three, and, sorry, I should've highlighted it. So, okay, we did one and two before, so one year is twenty-four thousand, three ninety-five forty-one, and two years would be thirty-six thousand, five ninety-three eleven. So your first choice is gonna be whether you want to come on board with the pool or not. Your second choice will be to confirm that you will stay with your six million dollar liability limits, which we would recommend, especially at this point. And then the, the third kind of big choice is how you want to handle your retro coverage or your extended reporting, or you go totally on a whim, and you do neither of those, and you just, you self, basically self-insure any claims that are unknown, unreported, prior to October five, that might be made and fall within those coverage terms. There are some other types of claims, like slip, trip, and falls, um, property damage claims, those are occurrence based, so those should be picked up under your general liability coverage that you have, um, expiring with EMC, so that's, um, you know, that's probably, those are not usually the high-dollar scary claims, though, that you don't know about.
Lynn, when you're talking about look back-
Mm-hmm.
Help me wander through on this, because if most claims are settled at the time of an accident, and it's cleared up and taken, what possible look back does that happen? I mean, I'm trying to wrestle with, what's, what claims are gonna come forward that happened five, seven years ago, that we haven't taken care of?
Isn't that called the tail, or, or what you refer to with the, the tail?
Yep, there's, there's all different kinds of-
Yeah, because if you switch, you wanna make sure the tail is covered.
You've got nose coverage, tail coverage, retro, look, yeah. So it's some types of claims, so you might have claims where people might not recognize or realize that they may have damage, so, um, when I was handling claims, some of the easier ones were some drainage permits, um, some of our counties would issue drainage permits, while when you get a drainage permit in a dry year, you don't realize that you have any issues, and it isn't until you get a more wet year, and now you've got drainage issues, and people wanna bring a claim for that type of thing. So your decision might've been made three or five years ago, but now they're not recognizing any impact from that decision until a, a, a larger time later. Um, other types of claims that may take a little bit of time to evolve, might be some harassment-type claims, some employment-related claims, where maybe somebody's, um, left employment or has been terminated, they might not have made their claim yet, but they may be preparing to do that, and they just haven't let you know. Um, some other types of claims, um, maybe not as relevant to, like, the county, but um, we do have some molestation claims that come out of the woodwork once in a while, um, false arrest, wrongful incarceration, if you've got people who are adjudicated and, and released, and, and suddenly they are no longer, um, guilty, we've had a few of those claims, where it has been quite some time since that person was originally charged and convicted, and then they get out of prison because they were, um, adjudicated. Um, so those, that occurrence date is, is maybe quite far back historically, but now your claim is, is new and freshed, not something you would've known about, because as far as you guys knew, everything was handled properly, and so now we have that claim, um, that might need to be addressed. Those are just some examples of things that I've seen historically doing claims.
All right. Is there any other questions that we have?
Uh, I have, this is not, this is a process, Mr. Chair. We're only three commissioners here today. When we start talking about fundamental changes, which we're looking at, I'd just as soon have five members, uh, commission, uh, be able to vote on that, rather than just three. It's my own personal feeling on this, uh, I don't know that it's incumbent that we make that decision today, uh, if it is, then we'll have to, but if it isn't, I would just as soon get all the chairs filled and have five people vote on it.
We just need to know by about midday on Friday the fourth, so that we can let our claims folks, our reinsurance carriers and stuff like that, 'cause your coverage, um, expires on the fifth, which is a Saturday. So I just need to let my folks know, um, if you're coming on board, if you're, if you're gonna continue to work with, um, Zach and, and Jensen and stuff like that. So we, I mean, you have a little, little bit of time, um, I certainly commend you and, and, and appreciate the, the request to have the additional input of the, of the commissioners, too. So if you have a meeting, or if you wanna schedule, I'll let, Sherry's like, "Don't talk." Like, whatever you need to do to make this, that you're comfortable with it, but we do it properly, because the last thing we want is for there to be any, um, issues with meetings and things like that as well.
Next Tuesday is October first.
Yep, we got, next May is October first.
Commissioners, you have any?
Is that okay? Does that work with your budget stuff? I don't know how any of that works.
Yeah.
That's not my jam.
Yeah, um, I'll be here next meeting. Um, just to shed a little bit of light on this for taxpayers, so as I understand it, if the commission goes with the public alliance, um, and we go with the six million dollars of coverage, um, the annual premium is about two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, is that correct?
Um, I think that's right. Yeah, so without the retro, um, just the coverage going forward, um, with your agent commission, um, yeah, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, nine seventy-nine, ninety-six, and then we would add in, if you take retro coverage from the pool, at whatever rate you want, or if you decide to do the extended reporting with EMC, then you would just, that would be their one-time fee on either side. So you would add that to the two-eighty-five.
And, and then you mentioned agent commission, what's that?
So that's just the amount that you would pay to Jensen Agency to act as your liaison, help make sure that, um, if you've got questions about various things reporting, um, they would be kind of your liaison with the pool if you'd like to have them.
Do, do other, how many other counties do a agent liaison?
Um.
Like, like, don't we just, here's what I'm getting at, th- these guys have done great work for us in the past, I appreciate it, um, but, you know, just in terms of spending taxpayer dollars, don't most counties just liaison directly with the, with the assurance-
Sure.
With the public pool?
Yeah.
We don't need a middleman to do that for us, do we?
It's not required. It's certainly up to you guys. Jensen has serviced your account for, forever, but yes.
Yep, they've done great work.
Yes.
Forty years.
I get that.
Forty years, Zach?
Absolutely.
Forty-four years.
Forty-four.
And then what is the dollar amount of the agent commission?
So, um, the agent commission is three percent of the contribution dollars, um, before any credits are applied, so, um, we had it figured at eight thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you say, is it three percent of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, or three percent of something else?
Nope, it's, it's three percent of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, six fifty, so that two-seventy-seven, that's the actual contribution dollars that you, that your coverage would cost for the upcoming term, so that's both, all three liability exposures, your government liability, law enforcement, and your auto, your auto physical damage, and then your property exposures, and then an enhanced crime. So we take all of those numbers, and we take three percent of that, and then we add your agent contribution, and then we provided some introductory loss control credits, based on interviews with safety benefits and, and just our relationship, what we know of you guys, um, going forward. So then we, we subtract that then, and then your new total is the two-eighty-five, um, nine seventy-nine. So you start at two-seventy-seven, six fifty, you add the eighty-three twenty-nine for the agent commission, we subtract out your loss control credits that we offered, which was seventy-nine fifty-three, and then you end up at two-eighty-five, nine seventy-nine.
So if we opt not to do the agent commission, how much do we save?
So you would save eighty-three twenty-nine, because you would, we would just back that out, and then you would still keep your seventy-nine fifty-three credit, um, so basically, right around fifteen thousand less, you'd be just under two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, um, for your coverage. Again, I'm a crock pot mather, so somebody else can do all the fine details, but, yeah, I mean, between the, the, the credit, and then if we take off the agent commission, we take that from the two-seventy-seven, it should get you kinda back down to just under the two-seventy mark.
Well, if you're a crock pot mather, I'm probably a campfire mather.
Okay.
So I gotta ask you so many questions.
No, that's totally fine.
Yeah, thank you.
So the two final numbers, so I got that straight, with the, um, commission is two-eighty-five?
Yep, two-eighty-five. Yep, 285,979.
And without that, it is $83,000 less?
Um, it would be.
270.
It would be right around 270, it'd be about 15, almost 16,000 less.
16 or 15 or 16,000 dollars less. And the advantages of having a commission person is we have somebody to take care of claims immediately and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what the parameters are, so. Or does our, or does our auditor or staff take care of all of that at the same time?
So your, your auditor? So if you didn't have a Zach to report to, basically what happens right now is the auditor or whomever you have appointed to be responsible for all things insurance-related or coverage-related, they are responsible for reporting that to Zach and then Zach is responsible for reporting that to the company, whether it's EMC or if you have somebody else in, in line. Without Zach, then they just report it to me or if they want to report directly, claims directly to claims associates, they have that opportunity. So really, in, in like the, the metrics of it, it's just a matter of who they actually report to. Do they report to Zach or do they report those changes and requests to me?
Okay. All right, again, this is, we're asking either for board action or we're asking to either possibly table it, I suppose, a week. I guess before we make a motion, then what we want to do, is there any public input? Okay, seeing none, I guess.
Mr. Chair, I'd still prefer that, I realize it's cutting it close, but we do have a meeting on October 1st. And maybe chances are, we would have all five commissioners here to make this decision. So that would be my wish.
So are you asking to delay this a week?
Yep, I am.
What is your motion?
I am requesting that.
That you delay it a week?
Yeah.
Okay, before we go, I ask for a second, I see our auditor.
So just to be sure, though, on October 1st, you have to make a decision, whether it's just you three or not, the decision has to be made.
And I won't be here, that's just saying.
That's okay, we got numbers.
You can, you can email me, but I will be in London, so.
London, good for you.
Yeah, so.
Zach, will you be here?
I can be.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable waiting for five. I don't know about Commissioner Aaron's, you, Spay or whatever you think.
We do have a motion, I guess, I'm looking for a second.
Well, I'm, this is not a fundamental change. This is just kind of basic business, as far as I'm concerned. This is a pretty easy decision to make, so I don't need other commissioners here. They, you know, can speak for themselves. So I'm ready to move forward today.
Okay, we, okay, I have to ask for a second to the motion.
Well, it died.
I guess it died, okay. Is there another motion?
Well, here's my motion, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve the chairman to enter into an agreement with the Public Assurance Alliance.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second? Okay, it looks like the motion does not have a second, so that has died. What would you like to do?
Wait a week.
With no action being taken, we can automatically move it to the 1st.
Okay, with no action being taken, I guess we're going to move it to next Tuesday, the 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on then to item number three. Madam Auditor?
Okay, so on September 10th, we passed the 2025 budget. So today, I just wanted to look at preparation for 2026. Realizing that we do have six months prior to the 2026 budget discussions, but since we have it fresh in our mind, I'd like to do a little review of the budget session. So one of my questions would be what worked during the 2025 budget and what did not? Do you guys have any feedback? Do you want to send me feedback? And then if we don't have any feedback on that, then I'll just keep going. Okay, so I need to recommend two committees being implemented for future budget items. The first committee I'd like to have implemented would be made up of two commissioners, a representative from the state's attorney's office, a representative from the auditor's office and human resources and the judiciary. The committee would collect information and present options to Lincoln County to decide the future of Lincoln County's public defender's office. Lincoln County has a possible three options available. We can continue with the current practice of having a public defender contract. We can establish a county public defender's office or we can join with the Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office. Lincoln County should decide by the time we start the budget process for 2026, which option would be the best fit. The committee should be established as soon as possible and decision for direction should be made no later than March 1st of 2025. So if you'd like, we can get this on to a different, another agenda to establish the committee, but I do believe we need to move forward with it.
Again, you're asking for no action, but can you give me, pardon?
No action.
I guess, can you give me the, the group again of?
So what I, what I am recommending, you do what you want. Two commissioners, a representative from the state's attorney's office, a representative from the auditor's office, a representative from human resources.
From which one?
Human resources, that Tracy's office, and a representative from the judiciary. So a judge or clerk or?
What was the last one?
Judiciary, so it'd be the judges or the clerks or somebody in the judicial office. So if you, if you want to see this, I can put it on to another, we can formalize it. But I believe we do need to get this established and move forward with it.
Sheri, this may digress for a minute, but we're talking about the public defender's office. And we have seen that grow over the years, it goes up every year. What in your mind is the tipping point? I mean, I'm not trying to circumvent, I think, I like your idea, but what is the tipping point where we no longer just job it out or hire it out or we internalize it, have it in-house?
Well, I think we're at that point. Right now, our contracts are running more than what it would cost to run the office, I believe. That's preliminary numbers because we haven't deep-dived into it, but the numbers that we've looked at, that's where we're sitting.
So could we, in start, I like the idea, too. Not necessarily establishing the PDO, but of getting the process, doing the fiscal analysis. So I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse by coming up with the solution first and then backtracking it through some county commission task force. Instead, I think what the question ought to be is not, do we establish a PDO? The question is, what are the costs of all the competing solutions?
Right, and that's what the?
That's one of them, that's the fiscal analysis part of it. And I think what we should do, because we got Mr. Anderson on board here as well, hopefully he could assist with this, is we create what the, you know, obviously the pros and cons and cost is one of them. It's not the sole decision-making input, but it's a big one, probably the overwhelming one. But what I'd like to see before we, you know, come up with a predetermined outcome is, like you say, I mean, Sheri, about you think preliminary, back-of-the-envelope numbers were there, well, let's do an economic deep dive and see if that's true. Let's tease that out and see if that theory is true or not. You know, because, and it's not like we're recreating the wheel here. There's other PDO offices, not only in this state, but around the country, for that matter. So it's not as if we're creating, you know, we're putting a man on the moon here or something, okay? So doing economic analysis on this should be fairly easy, you know, relatively speaking. That's what I would like to see first. Let's do the, let's do the numbers, let's see what the different cost drivers are for all of the proposed courses of action.
Well, and the reason I say the committee is, there will be things that I have no idea about for a PDO office. So that would be the, that would be the recommendation for the committee is to bring in those people that do have that idea and make sure that we're covering all the bases.
So it'd be a review of 2025 applied toward 2026?
No, it'd be establishing an office altogether.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I saw this story came out this morning about the chief justice of the Supreme Court came out with this report from this institute called the Sixth Amendment Center or something like that. And they're, they have this proposal now where they're suggesting that counties in South Dakota should no longer put liens on a criminal defendant's property in order to recover money in order to recover attorney's fees that are paid by the counties. I mean, I'm just one person, but for me, that's a non-starter. I'm willing to have that dialogue. I just don't think it's responsive to victims. I don't think it's helpful to county taxpayers. It just increases pressure on property taxes. And until the state comes up with some kind of comprehensive method to fund indigent defense, because South Dakota is one of the very few states and I think we're the only state in the nation now, or maybe there's one other, but they're phasing out, where counties are in charge of paying for indigent defense. Forty-eight or 49 states in this country do not use their county budgets to pay for indigent defense. And so you have to ask yourself, as a South Dakotan, why are we an outlier? And if we are an outlier, what are, are we doing this right? Are we doing this wrong? And what can we do to maybe make this better for victims, better for defendants, better for counties, better for the public? I mean, it just seems very odd that we're the only state in the nation that continues to do this. And then we have to say to ourselves, what the hell's going on with our property taxes? And why can't the state of South Dakota contribute to indigent defense as opposed to making local property taxpayers do it? But then that also invites a larger discussion about the fundamental way in which we collect taxes in this state as well. And some people may not want to have that conversation.
Well, I have this from?
At the end of the day, we've got to become more effective here at the county level, as long as counties are responsible for doing this. We got to become more, more financially responsible in doing this. So that's why I support what Sheri's talking about.
House Bill 1071, Indigent Defense Fund, we're talking about to some degree. The state legislature passed $3 million additional funds were allocated by counties for indigent defense. And Lincoln County share is $187,207.73 of the $3 million that we're to get. So we do get some compensation back from the state due because of House Bill 1057.
So that's less than 10% of the contract that we have right now. And then, so.
Go ahead.
The second committee that I want to set up would be to do a budget review process. And I, as much as everybody on the board is guilty of not having a solid direction for the budget process, I think over the four years that I've been the auditor, we've done it this way and then we've done it that way and then we've done it this way and I don't think there's been any consistency. The budget is not a small project and creating a committee will allow us to create a solid process for the budget that could be reviewed and improved yearly. Now currently, we do have a foundation that was established by the commission office for the 2025 budget. I think we can still probably do a lot of work, of work on it. So I'd like to get a committee of two commissioners, the auditor and at least two department heads and possibly anybody else, if you wanted somebody from the private section to work through this. I think we can tighten down the budget process a lot more. Over the last four years, I do see that people are not sure which way, are we, are we coming up to talk about 3%? Are we coming, you know, what are we doing? So I think if we get it solid, then those questions will be answered, not only for department heads, but for the public as to what's happening. So these two items, if you would like me to, we can put them on a future agenda. We can make it an official committee and move forward with them. The budget one, again, like the, much like the PDO one, I'd like to have set up soon so that we could have the process presented, presented to the board, get everybody on the same page by January 1st.
Well, I commend you because I, I think this is something in the right direction, which needs to be done, so.
Are you ready to put them on the agenda for next week?
I mean.
To vote on?
It's going to be exactly what I just said to you today, but yeah.
I, I would be in favor, I think they're very good. I'd put them on for next week's agenda.
Okay, and so if you have any additional thoughts to process or what you want to do on it, we can have that discussion next week, but let's get the boards established at least.
Good idea.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so let's look at some of the things that happened with the adoption of the budget. When we did a review of the preliminary budget or provisional budget, we did come up with some changes from what was the provisional budget to what was the final. That was, that's the first slide on here. The next one is, how did the budget that you passed affect you? It will establish a general fund levy. And keep in mind, these numbers have not been, through the state, they've not been approved. I don't think there's any reason why they wouldn't be, but I have to do that disclaimer. The general fund levy will be 1.531. The courthouse will be 0.038. I can't, I almost made that too small, I can't read it. Highway shop is 0.043. Justice center is 2.264. And firefighting will be 0.040. That's the rural fire. That one, that levy is only for people outside of municipality. So the next one that we want to look at is the history of Lincoln County levies. In 2015, we started with a levy of 2.499. Today, with all the combined different levies that I just went over, we have a levy of 1.916. This will be, this is or has been a 23% decrease in the levy amount. Now, the reason, one of the reasons that it's decreasing is the values. So our values have gone up from 2015 and to 2025, 2,644%.
What was that percent again?
2,644% for properties within a municipality and an increase of 126% for parcels outside. These percentages are based solely off of the numbers on the chart. They're not counting growth, reappraisal or anything else. It's saying, this is our value here, this is our value here, this is the difference. The general fund tax request has gone from 9,000, or I'm sorry, $9,725,479 in 2015 to $17,871,204 in 2025. That's an increase of 83%. In 2015, income from sources not included in taxes, the budget was $1,758,250. And in 2024, the budget was $5,015,758, which is approximately 185% increase. So when you see that the request went up 83%, but the taxes went, or the levies went down 23%, that sources other than taxes is what makes up the difference on that. Then the last one, which is probably the most interesting for most people. This is the estimated impact of what the levies are going to do from 2024 to 2025 on the three different levels of houses. I took a $200,000 house and, again, these are all simple math estimates. The 8.93% increase is just the flat number from last year. It's not breaking down anything else. So I put a 8.93% increase on your home value for $200,000 in '24. Um, so I put a 8.93% increase on your home value for 200,000 in '24, went up 8.93%, 217. So on that, um, the 217,860 house outside of a municipality, the county portion only of the taxes is an increase of $20.01. Um, those included within a municipality is $19.37. And you can see on the chart going down for 326,790, um, $30.01 outside of it, 2905 inside, and then for the 435,720, um, $40 outside, 3873 inside. So then a couple of things to keep in mind about Lincoln County is, Lincoln County currently does not or has not financed general operations with an opt-out. South Dakota has 66 counties, of which 32 are financing budgets with opt-outs. The current management teams that you have in Lincoln County are always looking for revenue sources to offset the expenditures, um, along with being open to technological advances to streamline processes in hopes of lowering costs and being more efficient. And your teams should be recognized for their efforts on what they are doing. That is my presentation. Any questions?
Sheri, thank you for putting this together. This is, is very interesting, very eye-opening.
That's what I was going for.
Yep. Uh, for those of us who are into numbers, for those of us who are campfire cooker numbers, mathers, uh, to stay with the analogy. Um, question I have is, um, where did you get the 8.93% increase for home value?
Um, increase of value from 2024 to 2025.
Okay, so that-
Straight number. I just said 2024 was X, 2025 is this, the percent increase is 8.93%.
So that 8.93%, that, that's from, uh, the county equalization offices?
Nope, nope, nope. Well, I mean, the abstract number. So our abstract last year was whatever, I don't have that number in front of me, the abstract from this year is 1165. The percent increase for those two overall is 8.9.
That's where you're getting it from?
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I could go way deeper into this, but I think the simple is probably better.
Mm-hmm. So Sheri, wanna, did I hear you correct saying that the county portion of this increase would be $20?
Um, on one of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, for the outside, county portion of taxes, inside of munis, or outside of municipality is $20.01 on a 200,000, well, 200 and whatever thousand dollar house.
So on a 200,000 dollar house, it'd go up 20 bucks?
Mm-hmm.
County portion?
County portion, you have to-
Just the county.
Keep that in mind when you see your tax bill-
It's counties.
Yeah.
That's all we're talking about.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, you don't get to pay your taxes à la carte.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be nice? Just kidding.
Because a lot of times, you know, people write their check to Lincoln County Treasurer-
Yep.
And they don't understand.
Yep, I've had several, several, several of those conversations.
That probably costs the county more to process the taxes than the 20 bucks that we get in addition, you know?
Well, that is, you know, there's a lot of also unfunded mandates that go into these numbers that we just have to assume.
Any other questions for auditor? Again-
Commend, thank you.
This is very good.
Very, very good.
Good information. I know that, hopefully, the public sees it as well.
And if you have any questions, or as far as the public, anybody else want to talk to me about it, I'm always available. Um, but these two items for the board, the two committees will be on next week's agenda.
All right, thank you.
Sheri, I just want to tell you one thing, and for the public as well. I have, we have seen budget year after year after year, but I've never seen an auditor take more time to present numbers and to be as transparent and open on how these numbers are arrived for everybody, but mainly the public to better understand. So I commend you on that.
Yes, thank you. Moving on, Mr. DeGroot.
Morning Commissioners, Drew Grill from the State's Attorney's Office. This item is seeking board action to co-sponsor the City of Canton's application to be placed on the state water plan. Uh, this would authorize the Chair to execute, execute that application with the City of Canton. Uh, what this does, uh, so previously, the board action has been, uh, that the board has committed $725,000 to the improvements of Northwest Avenue, um, in partnership with the City of Canton. We're looking to maximize our dollars, to put it bluntly. We want to try and, uh, do whatever we can. Uh, we've already committed to, uh, improving that road, but what can we do to maximize our dollars and make that road, uh, and entrance into the cor, County, uh, Justice Center even better? Uh, so what this would do is just start the process of allowing us to seek additional funds with the City of Canton to possibly beef up that road. CCOG is actually helping us with this process, and Harley Ferguson is here to answer any questions about the state water plan, uh, and the application process.
Okay, go ahead. State your name and address, please.
Harley Ferguson, um, 500 Northwestern Avenue, um, CCOG, um, work for the Southeastern Council of Governments. Um, so yeah, the process right now is just to present the state water plan application. There'll be two of them, uh, clean water and drinking water, uh, state water plan applications. Uh, that'll be presented to, uh, the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, um, or, yeah, D A and R. And, um, there'll be, uh, the board will decide on Nov, on their November meeting to add it to the state water plan. Um, this doesn't guarantee funding, so then there's a second process to that, which is applying for the drinking water and then the sanitary sewer, uh, funding portion of it. So then that's kind of more of an extensive application process. But just for right now, it's just to get it on the state water plan.
Okay, any questions? I guess not, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, before, okay.
No, go ahead.
Before I ask for a motion, is there any public input on this matter? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Aaron, second by Schmidt. Uh, is there any discussion? Not call roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, motion carried. Next, is Mr. Meter here? No, he isn't, is he? Is he available, or Drew, do you know?
I don't know, but I can step in. This should be pretty, um, easy action here. Uh, again, Drew Grill from the State's Attorney's Office, seeking board action to approve a bid package for American engineer testing. Uh, this is a budgeted item of $5,000. This is also reimbursable through the A I P grant, um, so seeking, uh, board approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. DeGroot?
I'd move for approval.
Okay, okay. Uh, before I can get public input, before we vote on it, any public input? All right, I do have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? If not, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, motion carried. Next, uh, opportunity for public comment, again, on those items that are not on the budget, or excuse me, not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jim Berlin. Uh, I live at 403 West 11th Street here in Canton, South Dakota. Um, first of all, I want to thank all of you for your public service and the ones who are absent today. And I also want to emphasize today that I'm speaking, uh, as an individual citizen, not as a state legislator. My term of office is coming to a conclusion at the end of this year. I'm not on the ballot, I'm not running again, but I just want to emphasize I'm speaking today just as a, uh, individual public citizen. Uh, I, it's been reported to me that, um, there's the thought of establishing a satellite office, uh, for county business outside of the, outside of the county seat. Um, there, I know this might be considered a small decision, but I think it would have huge implications for, uh, the future of county government. Uh, and I believe that once you begin to offer in-person services, uh, outside of the county seat, that demand will only grow, especially based on the, uh, situation with the population, uh, might say, balance in the, in the county at the present time. So I know it'd be a, it's a small decision that is at least considered perhaps now or in the future, but I would, uh, I would believe that if that decision would be to go forward, it would potentially at least open up a Pandora's Box, which would have very great both, uh, political and geographical, uh, consequences for the future of the, of Lincoln County. So I would urge you today to, uh, to not go forward with any potential plan to have an, a satellite office for in-person county business outside the city limits of the current county seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public input on public comments?
Good morning Commissioners, Harold Timberman from Lincoln County Emergency Management. Just wanted to give you a brief update on how we're proceeding with our flood recovery. As I mentioned before to you, we've had about 385 requests for assistance in crisis track from homeowners. And the teams from FEMA have gone around and contacted each one of those. There may have some that were missed, we're finding out, we're trying to catch up with now. We had, uh, 930 entries into the public assistance for towns and townships, and two private nonprofits for assistance, and each of those is being processed as we speak. We've had the best support from FEMA that we've ever had in the years that I've been emergency manager. We had teams that went around to each home initially and talked to homeowners. We had, people came around and we went through a couple of townships, looking at their damage. One of the biggest assets we've had is the crisis track process. If you were at the towns and township meeting, we had a presentation on that, not knowing that we were going to use it so quick. And most, all the townships got on board with that. So that was sometimes one township helping another. And, uh, our highway department helped some of the townships. Our state office helped them, but that's really been a godsend for us this, this year. I had the opportunity to meet with a federal coordinating officer for FEMA Region 8 in Sioux Falls last week, and, um, Eddie Martin is his name, and he was impressed with our depot down here for the Disaster Recovery Center. And I made sure he knew too that everybody that came here from FEMA gave us great support. They were conscientious, wanting to help everybody as much as they could. And, uh, so this has been a great process, so. If you have any questions on that, I can take them now, or we can talk later if you choose.
Harold, what do they, is there a consistent, or how do they support? Is this a monetary figure they give them, or how do they?
Yeah, many of the homeowners, uh, got direct deposits to their checking accounts-
Okay.
-after the FEMA people were there talking to them, or after they went to the Disaster Recovery Center. Some got checks, depending on how they wanted to do it. I talked to, uh, Jim Simmons as an example down south. He had considerable damage in his basement, and he got two checks and cons, you know, he had to replace his furnace, water heater, washer, dryer, all that kind of thing, so. Throughout, uh, Canton and the surrounding area, a lot of help's been given to people, so.
Good.
And the, uh, townships, they won't get any money for a time. It's all based on them spending the money, turning in the amounts, and then getting reimbursed from FEMA, so. But the process is going well.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
John Rambo, Building Superintendent. Uh, just wanted to take this opportunity to, uh, and I missed it last meeting, but, uh, John Hanson, uh, who you all know retired here, um, at the end of last month. Uh, I just wanted to do a public comment saying, hey, he got, he gave 20 years to Lincoln County, and how much I appreciated the fact that he did. He, uh, not only worked for me for a little over, almost four years, but before that, he was the manager at the transfer station. So I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to him and acknowledge his years of service.
Thank you.
Let me echo that. Um, John was probably one of our unsung heroes, because he took the transfer station, which wasn't a pleasant job, and kept that thing afloat for all those many years. And the goodwill that he generated on the part of the public by taking all kinds of garbage continually on there, and how he managed that place, because I can remember with trucks and all the things that he had to do, which we never appreciated, but to drive up in the wintertime and dump that garbage out, and John is one of those guys that always had a smile on his face, and we should have probably, I think they did have a recognition, didn't they, here?
Yes.
But I think publicly, if he's listening, I'd like to say thank you for your service, because he was a good citizen and a, a good employee, so.
Yeah, I, I don't want to stop short of saying one other thing, too, is, uh, he was pivotal while he worked for me in the development of the 4H grounds. Um, so, uh, that, he took a lot of pressure off of my shoulders in all of that build going on over there. And, uh, I know that, uh, many of the 4H families, uh, took a point to tell him thank you for that as well, so.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. Betty Otten, 467872, 73rd Street and T. Um, while I appreciated the last two comments, um, I would have thought that, um, emergency management should have been on the agenda, not on a, a, a public comment, um, because you guys have all broken precedent on the public comment by responding to that where you're not supposed to. So I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, Harold should have been on the agenda so that you guys could have had the public comment, and that people could have come up and said, thank you for what he was doing. So that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, good. Any Commissioners reports?
Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, Lincoln County is going to be conducting a food drive, which is going to support four different entities in our county, the Harrisburg Area Food Pantry, the Faith in Action Food Pantry in Beersford, uh, the Exchange in Lenox, South Dakota, and the Canton Lutheran Church. So from October 1st, starting October 1st to the 31st, we will have a drop-off, uh, box in the entryway of the courthouse. And, uh, so people can come in and make their donations, and what they're accepting items on are canned and jarred items, soups, vegetables, you know, all that good Spaghettios and peanut butter, boxed food, hamburger helper, pasta, cheese, all those things you guys like to eat. And then personal care items such as, you know, your shampoos, your Kleenex, and your, uh, toiletries. So I would say that this is something that, if you have any questions on this, all you got to do is call, uh, our Human Resource Office. But I would think this is something that we should all participate in, because it certainly goes to help four different entities in our county that, uh, serve those people that are less fortunate. So go shopping and bring a cart of food down here and dump it off in the front end.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioners?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you very much. Um, I want to echo John Rambo's and Commissioner Schmidt's comments regarding John Hanson. Gave 20 years to Lincoln County, and during that period of time, uh, he put in tremendous effort, um, on behalf of the county and the citizens. A lot of that effort was for the, initially, for the transfer station, and, uh, that was a, um, uh, what I would say is a burden of love out there, especially towards the end. Um, you know, that, what, what John did to keep that thing afloat with duct tape and bail wire and, uh, blood, sweat, and tears, he did that. And it was an incredible, you know, I remember those discussions that we had in terms of phasing the transfer station out, and John had always given it all of his effort to keep that going. And he did, because I think he felt a tremendous responsibility to help people out in the rural areas with having some access to, uh, you know, a garbage dump. And, but the way that so many things go now with regard to consolidation and, uh, moving on in terms of the economics of all that stuff, uh, you know, the county said goodbye. But, um, I remember when we, uh, transitioned John, and he agreed to go out to the airport and work for John Rambo. And, uh, I was glad that we were able to retain John for those last few years for him to be able to do that. And, uh, I'm just glad of- And I'm just glad of the effort that John, employees like John Hanson gave to the county because he did a great job. And I wish him well in retirement, and as I understand it, he's moving out of the area and moving up north, right, John? Yeah. So good for him and his family, and I'm, hopefully, he can spend some well-deserved time with his family now, helping them out up north to where he's moving. On another note, I did have a meeting with the mayor of Harrisburg regarding the, you know, their offer to the county of, you know, the satellite center. And, you know, the mayor is, has been following our discussions here. And because they no longer have a, what do you want to call it? Since the resignation of Andrew Petrus, they're, they're, you know, I guess, what, what was his position title?
He was administrator.
Yeah, city administrator. There you go. It was escaping me just now. They've put, they've told us that their, the offer stands to the county to be able to partner with them if this commission chooses to move forward. And that for the foreseeable future, they're not going to do anything, any major moves with that building because they don't have a city administrator. So, you know, basically, they're going to wait to hire a city administrator. But in the meantime, you know, the offer still stands to the county. So I know it's generated a lot of discussion, and I just wanted to provide some transparency so people know, knew where things stood with that. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to Senator Boland for his years of service to the legislature and to the Canton area and community. I don't know, did he take off, or is he still here? Is he hiding behind the podium? There he is. So I want to thank him, you know, he's riding out into the sunset in terms of his legislative career. And I want to thank him because he's always been coming to our meetings here and keeping us updated. And I know that when I've always tried to reach out to him, he's been available. So I appreciate his years of service to the legislature. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I'd like to say too, as, when I left Canton High School, I was succeeded by Jim Boland. And that was a long time ago, wasn't it, Jim? And anyway, thanks for the years that you gave to education as well. I'd like to just report that last week, we did have our state county commission conference out in Rapid City. I know Commissioner Schmidt and Landine were there. And I know that the breakout sessions were very valuable. I enjoyed those. Again, good information. And sometimes camaraderie and listening to other commissioners from various parts of the state is very valuable as well. But we're not alone, and some of these issues and problems and joys that we have, they're throughout the state. And nonetheless, I think we can be pretty happy that we are Lincoln County, and we do have nice problems. When I say nice, I mean growth and things of this nature because there's a lot of counties that don't have that. So anyway, I guess that's all I have to report.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up one thing? We had a session on artificial intelligence from the president of Dakota State University. And she talked a lot about AI, where it came from, where it is today. She had a funny comment, which we should probably put in these chambers once in a while, where she said that when AI first hit the scene, there was this overwhelming sense that the earth was going to, we're going to change, the earth is going to explode in two years. And she said, well, if that's the case, I'm going to quit my diet. Anyway, the point is, we talked to her afterwards and asked her about what impact it will have on local government. Well, we talked about planning sessions today. We talked about listening to the public. We talked about trying to put all that together. And yet, the technology that is coming down is just amazing on how that will have a long-range impact on government, on every aspect of what we do. So she is putting together a team up in Dakota State University at the request of the County Association so that that team can come out to individual counties and just share what may be ahead for our future. So I look forward to having that available, and that will fit kind of in coincidentally with our strategic planning session. So it all seems to work in kind of the stars are aligning on this thing, so. Anyway, that's all.
Do we have executive session, Drew? No executive? Okay, Paul, nothing? All right, well, then I'll entertain a motion to, I guess adjourn. Motion by? Aaron's second, by Schmidt? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, we are adjourned.